Seven o'clock. Forty? Very good. All right. We would like to call to order our planning commission meeting as of March ninth, twenty twenty-two. Anyway, we would like to welcome everybody that's here and those of you that are online. And we'd like to welcome our other planning commission member, Kevin. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. It's nice to be back.
Formally welcome the mayor. Alrighty. Let's move on our agenda here. Let's go to agenda item number two. Everybody get a chance to review the planning commission votes last month. Any questions, concerns? Not all there can motion to approve minutes for last month.
I'll make a motion. To approve the minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty, or not February nine.
You're right, yeah.
February ninth.
Okay, all the thirties.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, let's move on to.
Yeah, here. I'm like, I saw his mouth, but I couldn't hear him.
Your load on that? Can you hear us, Kevin?
Yes, I can now.
Yeah, he just can't hear. Were you, were you in a, were you, did you approve that? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, super. Let's move on to the agenda item number three then. This is our public hearing. Did you? Did you want to make any comments? Yes, I would love to.
So a little background on this. Purple Peaks LLC submitted an application on February eighth, twenty twenty-two to resell approximately three point six eight acres located at approximately twenty-four forty North Highway eighty-nine from A one agricultural to CP two commercial. Public notice was given on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, but a public hearing will be held and notice was also sent to all access within five hundred feet of this location. So that's what the public hearing is on, is that one minutes to propose three point six eight acres from A one to CP two.
Okay, I'm going to officially open up the public hearing. Those of you that would like to make comments, if we'll limit your comments to three minutes or so, we'll make sure chance to participate. So when you come up and you want to make some comments, please tell us what your name is and where you live and share with us. They're all scared. You're representing constituency event tonight?
Well, that wasn't the plan. I was hoping that someone else would get up and I could maybe add to that. And maybe try to cover it. So I, I'm going to kind of question along with this, if I may. But the rezoning here of this property, I'd first like to say that that as far as Harrisville goes and they're growing and we need more commercial, we need more businesses, we need manufacturing to help us with offset, you know, the taxes that other residents are going to end up paying more in taxes. And I know on eighty-nine, that's been, you know, for years and years long there as far as half businesses, it's a good location. And I feel that that's what we should be doing. And so in question here, and I know I only have a few minutes, so the partial that that is talked about on the rezoning, I'm just gonna, is seventeen zero six six zero zero six two is the one partial. I don't know if you have a map that you could pull up or not, but there's another partial. There's another partial along with that, along the side of that, that is owned by the same people. So the only thing that we had the notice on was that one partial to result that. So if that is, if that is rezoned, does the other partial to the north of that, it'd be northeast of that, is that also going to be part of it? I'm sorry, I can't hear.
It's only for the parcel that the notice went out for. If they were rezoning both of them, they would both have to be mentioned in that notice.
So if I'm correct, if I may, I'm going to go like this and say, is that, is that part of the concern of the other residents that are here?
Absolutely.
You need to talk to.
Yeah, sure.
So with that said, my neighbors may not like me with what I will say, but we do need more commercial. And it is along there, but I think if, if I would say that I would approve this on condition, on some conditions, that would be, you know, what is it going to be, what kind of commercials? Because you are starting to get close to residential. And I know right here is the backyard of these people here. So, you know, could it be a buffer, you know, some type of a, of a buffer as far as commercial residence? The, there's already commercial on eighty-nine. But how do we buffer that? And it's going to, I'm sorry, but it's going to come. Harrisville's growing, you're doing a lot of things that's been good for the city of Harrisville. Some of them that I don't like, some of them that I do. But if we could work together and work with the residents, especially these that are close and try to, try to make it so could work with us. I don't know what type of business, that would be my next question, what type businesses are they looking at to, to come into this? The other thing, it'll be the, probably the final thing I'll say is that on the, on one of the most, and is it, do we call it article? Eleven point twelve point zero one zero. In part, on what that says is that when you're starting commercial and you're connecting, the way I understand it, connecting commercial with residential, and as far as the streets go, limited disturbance to the residents, residential areas of the community. And so would you, I would ask you, please consider that.
Thank you. And just, just for the record, will you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Marvin Farrell, and I live on twenty-four seventy north seven fifty west. Thank you, Marvin.
Jenny, are we able to pull the map? Because I don't see the, the other additional taps I think that they're talking about. I see that one little strip. So anticipation is some of those I prepared. This is the current plan. Please map, you'll see the parcel that has been noticed. Right there, rear arrows. This one here. It does have a section. I got those back here. That's part of that parcel. It's all a part of one parcel. And that is the parcel number that was.
Seventeen. That.
What they're saying is there's an additional piece that belongs to that same owner?
There's three parcels in that area that belong to them. And from the information in the packet, it looks like they're just moving the business that burned down on eighty-nine back to the beginning of that parcel. So they're just putting the one business in there. And it's the same sort of business that was up front on eighty-nine.
So we've moved a little bit from the public hearing here to more discussion. If the concern is related and having to answer questions that are related to that. But, and just to be clear, that the, this is our rezon application. This is not a site plan review. So we want to be mindful of what we're being asked to do this evening. This is the parcel that was noticed, the zero zero six two.
There are two different parcels that are all over.
Okay, so this one is not. This, it won't be cut on that section.
Six two and four nine.
So this is zero zero six three. So this is owned by the same property. This would just be the discussion related to this was for access for utilities.
Okay, for those of you that would like to come up and make comment, time's still.
I just want to absolutely understand which one we're talking about.
So my name is William Allen, twenty-four forty-one north seven fifty west, directly behind this property. Couple of concerns I have is that the property on both sides of this will still stay in one. Right now, behind my house is cows, three cows actually. And then on the other side of the property are lots of horses and they're all spills of hay. Just, my biggest concern is my grandchildren play in my backyard. I have anger in a quarter lot. The whole back that's open, right adjacent to this property. I've already seen them back there moving dirt. They've already built about a four foot mound and pushed it back about a hundred feet. If they keep raising that, every summer, there's about two and three foot of standing water out there. And as they start raising that, they're going to push that water right into my property and right into my neighbor's property. So the biggest concern is, you know, having some kind of easement or some way to protect my property from getting flooded out by the things they're going to build back there, what they're going to do. And to protect my grandchildren as they're playing out there because I have a barn and a house and I can't really see out there. And my four grandchildren will play out there. The fence that's up now, you know, they can climb over it. And I'm just really concerned if they start construction out there, my grandkids get out there and get hurt. That's my biggest fear. And then the water issues, you know, backing that water up on our properties will, will really be devastating for all of us. And you, you have problems with that now? It doesn't back up to our property yet. My property is three hundred and sixty-three feet and their property is a thousand and sixty-five feet. But.
Do you, do you have a natural oil area there?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and they're starting to bring in dirt and start filling and coming toward us. That's probably my biggest concern. And like you said, it's not really an issue of what they're going to build there because evidently nobody knows or they're not saying. You know, I've heard some things. I've heard they're going to build a, you know, take the barn, rebuild it, build a hotel back there behind it. You know, I've heard all kinds of things, but I don't know what they're going to do. But them are my concerns. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
My name is Kathy Hill and I live at twenty-three ninety-three north seven fifty west. And my concern is same as theirs is the water. I mean, we lived here, there on that street for forty-two years. And everything just flowed out. Then on the corner down there, skiing built his up. Then right where this property is that they want to sell, on wet years, it's a lake. We call it Lake Harrisville around our place. Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's there till July, August on wet years. And so no pasture, anything grows and it goes up to the houses. Now, if he's going to build that up, then it's going to come over to the next parcel and up to Alan's and our houses. And in forty-two years, we've always been dry. Even what was thirty years ago when Harrisville flooded and we had canoes out there and everything. It, it never affected our, like, three, four houses right there in the mid one seven fifty. We never got any of the water. And I'm afraid that they start building that, well, it's going to come up into my pasture. And then it does that and then it ruins my pasture. But that's, that's my biggest concern is what are they going to do with the water?
Well, you don't have to say that. You've expressed your concern, which is, which is very valid. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that, sharing that.
Hello, my name's Wade Rasmussen. And my wife lives at twenty-four sixty-one north seven fifty west. We're directly east of where it's parked, so we share, like, where that property butts up. It's halfway between his yard and my yard. And I'll, I'd like to express the water concerns as well because that whole west side of where my property line is, that's always you know, springtime does, you know, turn into pond out there. What they have already bringing in all that backfield. I'm not sure how far they can push back, but it's quite a ways from what it was before. So we'll see what happens this spring. So because we've, we have had water issues. And we've only been there five or five years now, but we, we've had water issues.
In your house or your yard?
In the yard already, so that is a big concern. We've, like, I, I've had to put in some, you know, mitigate the water to get away from our house because it pushed up so far, so. Anyhow, that's a concern. The concern was also that easement, whatever it is, if it's utilities, what they're going to do there. I know that's not a question as far as the rezoning. And then also, how far back are they going to come? Yeah. Thank you. How's it going?
Good, not too bad. I'm Justin Bonfellow. I live at twenty-three seventy-three north seven fifty west, just south of this property. Concerns of the water, of course, I have the same thing. They're building up right behind me right now. Bringing in commercial stuff. I have horses, so what they're going to bring in could affect what I got going on in my, in my property now. Whether it be they start using chemicals, soil somehow. We don't have any of the information of what they're bringing in. I really appreciate if we know what to bring in. As of this point, I wouldn't want to see it.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. After we get done with the hearing, I close the hearing, we'll, we'll answer, we'll address some of your questions during our discussion, just, just so you know. So that rumors aren't running around, but if you aren't worried about things that you don't need to be worried about. Is, does anybody online? Yeah, that's. Okay, if there are no other I'm going to go ahead and formally close our public hearing. And then let's let's move on to oh, and I might want to, I, I need to tell you that that after the close of this public hearing, there'll be a public comment period that will be open for any written comments by any, any folks that would like to until the council meeting, city council meeting of April twelfth. So you have until then to submit any, any written comments. Okay, let's move on to agenda number four. And let's, let's begin with the discussion. Can we bring up the picture of what they're planning to do? It's important for you to understand this, so that you're the one gentleman mentioned that there might be. Will you? Just around. Had heard something about a hotel, but as you can tell, that's the, the only thing they're doing is that building that's gray right there. And it's closer to eighty-nine. You see that there? And it's going to be a restaurant and a convention center, so they're going to have a lot of space on the top level for people who want to hold weddings. And I spoke of the parties. But they're going to make it a nice looking building. It will be a great addition, I think, to Harrisville. And to what's available to our citizens. But we need to address in a very real way the concerns that you've mentioned about displacement of water.
As far as the rezoning goes, the water should make a difference if we kept that agriculture, like, it's still backfill the area and plant stuff because their pasture right now is flooded everywhere. Where they grow. So Justin, you want to talk about the water?
So, yeah. They're, they're very much correct in, this is a low in the land. Prior to.
Couldn't just introduce yourself?
I'm Justin Shitson, the public works director. Again, this parcel was actually impeded and, and lack, and the water pushed onto this parcel due to another parcel further north leveling out and building up where the water had naturally settled in, in that, from that other owner. But as I've discussed with these property owners, that, that's about as far back as we can go right now to not put any fill until if at a later time they decide to add on to any certain part of that, they have to do a full site plan with a full stormwater system collection, capture of all this excess water, any water that is, comes, that works through the actual ditch systems that kind of inundate that area with the water. So we have kind of put a point line on, hey, we're not pushing anymore back and filling that up. Again, there's a couple parcels to the south that it continued, the water also continued on. I know we do have a site plan for one of those. And, and it falls into the commercial zone already. And we're kind of looking at ways to capture some of that water and get it into our storm sewer system and, and get it corralled. So maybe.
Better. So how far, how far back would you say are they backfilling, if you could?
I would say they're, they're probably in this area. From what I can kind of see, from my best vantage point, I haven't physically walked out there to the the back.
This side of the screen point towards.
I was roughly right in here from where I've seen. That they pushed quite a bit back, yes.
So where's the neighboring property?
The, which neighboring property, they're going to try.
Yeah.
So this is there, correct. But the neighboring property that I'm talking about, they're going to try to catch stormwater is actually down here. Can't see it on this. Yes.
What would be the estimate gap between where you're saying?
I can't give you a real correct. We, we were trying to stay within fifty feet. Stay at fifty feet away from property line.
So in, in your estimation, if we do have a lot of water in any particular year, what are we going to do to?
I mean, the problem is, again, everybody sheds to that point. Their properties shed to that point, properties to the north shed to that point. Again. Well, the south is not going to shed to that point because they're, it's going to be caught in the storm system and get out to the stormwater system with the new development of Aliett. So it's hard to say exactly what we can do without them building and encroaching into that property and, and taking that out through a storm system as soon as they decide a, a different concept. I mean, there will be a storm system around the parking and the building and all that infrastructure, the, the buildings they're putting, the infrastructure will come into there. The sewer, the water, the storm sewer, and will collect all the sewer, all the, all the water that's on the parking lot and get it out to eighty-nine. But as far as that actual the other property owners to the north, the property owners to the east, that it all just kind of falls into that natural drainage. I can't, I can't give you exact calculations because we don't know the water year that, what, what comes in that year. And we also don't know how much of that is also due to mismanagement of irrigation waters. There is irrigation comes through the ski property and that is secondary. Irrigation is secondary. Again, I, I had a great conversation with Baske, which I wish this could be kind of explained a little. But the way that Pleasant View and his property lineup, that channel actually kind of flows backwards and then goes kind of on that right by that pump house and back down to the south. And flows out that way, therefore adding to drainage problem.
He actually filled up the drainage that drained that in the back. That drained over on.
Like I said. Yes, there was an omission in that. Again, one before my time, one spoiled a lot of people's favorite time. So, yes, but.
If, if you could just share with the, you know, we are good citizens, what our intent is as a city to try and help.
My intent as, as a city would always be first and foremost to capture as much water and put it back into our storm systems, which actually all connect back to either Four Mile Creek, Six Mile Creek, Four Western Mount and help replenish downstream as best as we can. That would be our goal. The city doesn't per se constitute have money to just go in there and pipe it all in and, and do a collection system. We, we really take on development to help us do that. As the developers develop their lab, they can kind of, we engineered that correctly with site plans and all that and tried to collect and capture as much as we can. We have very strict, strict, swift stipulations, which is stormwater pollution prevention programs. which is storm water pollution prevention programs, so we make sure that the water is clean and, and it's as best going downstream as we can. So we hear your concerns, we, we're trying to, as much as we can keep that channel open and, and that flood plain there until we, we have the developments go on behind. If that, if that piece of it develops further behind, then that will be on the developers uh, paths, make sure we engineer that properly, get it through our storm sewer system, either out 89 or head south, and then it will connect on the 89.
Thanks, Josh, another way, the best way to deal with the water is to develop it, because as they develop it, they don't want their buildings to flood, so where you're gonna put in pipes, and they're gonna paper it off the property to the storm sewer system instead of just letting it flood their property or other properties. So as.
Not really, because they've got a storm system around their property to keep them, but they got to build it up now the flood must.
Wow, as far as they develop, they're going to control the water that falls on that section. If they were to develop farther back, they would then develop a storm drain system to take that out.
Well, the two, and a lot of it usually stands back there and else stand, you know, like. Awesome. Awesome, okay. I don't want that to happen. Right, we hear you, and I hope that you feel like that we're listening. And, and that the city is serious about making sure that we, we don't cause damage as we, as we try to think through this issue. Um, one of the nice things about this in your favor is the parking that's gonna be surrounding this building and, and like Justin said, all that water will be collected there rather than going in the soil and then moved out towards 89, so hopefully that, that will help mitigate that, some of the challenge there, so.
We come up with a lot of.
Great questions, and we appreciate everything you said. Uh, so now that we've had a chance to really talk about it, uh, what other comments do you have?
See the, excuse me, can I see the master plan map again? Absolutely. So this is the current land use map. This is the actual block, this is the future land use map. So in.
At some point in the future, that's all planned for commercial, and that's all the same.
No point in that, I ain't ever. Are you just.
I think it's.
Okay, all right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Do you?
Um, my comments are, it's, it's just a rezon, we're actually, we're going to have a site plan to talk about just certain of the residents as the planning commission with our future map, it's something we need to consider as part of our future plan. So staff findings on this proposed ordinance are that it's consistent with our concept plan. They provided a concept plan, it's a general idea of what their proposed use is, and gave the approximate locations of the buildings, the structures and facilities of the space parking access and traffic patterns and infrastructure of their proposed project. The purpose and intent CP2 zone, is that the location should be adjacent to or around good access. It's right off Highway 89, we intend we already.
This parcel is actually going through 89, so they're going through their other parcel to get it right.
So the intent behind this rezon is when they're rebuilding, they're rebuilding across the property, the parcel line onto this parcel, so we require this parcel to be rezoned so that it can rebuild the building. That's where the additional background comes from. The, the concept plan is consistent with the 2019 future land use map. So staff does recommend a positive recommendation for adoption of this ordinance based on those findings.
Any other comments or concerns or issues we need to discuss?
Here's the reason, it's, we wanted to give a commercial example, that's why I'm kind of in the middle of that, like. Just a general sign, just a CP2 description, that's a good way to keep that business open there, try to keep this device. That's based.
Possibly it might be how, how chairs, we explain that rezon is property owner driven. The city does not come in and ask people to rezon their property, it's property owner driven. So if a property sells or somebody else has, they can come in and petition the city for a rezon, but the city does not go mandate rezon.
Yeah, we're not requiring that at any time, that's, if they want to, they can also keep it the way it is right now. I'm just not really wanting it to change.
Okay, uh, if there are no other questions or concerns, I think we ought to entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Harrisville ordinance, file 32, which is the zoning change of Weber County parcel 170660062 from agricultural A1 zone to commercial CP2 zone.
I'm second, I'll second that one. Okay, very good, all in favor?
All right.
All right. That, uh, that passes, and we're gonna forward along to the city council a positive recommendation. Then they'll take up the issue. Uh, we want to thank all of you for coming, you're welcome to stay. We're now gonna move on to agenda item number five, which is some training for us. So, but we appreciate you coming. Thanks, hopefully the information I shared tonight will help. Yeah, I think more comments.
Well, you can send them in writing to Jenny for more info as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate coming. That's information. Okay, let's move on formally to agenda item number five, Dan, and I suppose we need to turn some time over to you?
Yes, thank you, and I will speed read these slides. I might know how, how excited we get about this annual training. Isn't this what we just spent three hours doing? I wish, I actually required to make sure that I'm not repeating, but this is our annual training about the open and public meetings act and a non-discrimination training.
Yeah, this is, we have to let them know we're having a meeting, we can't have meetings without them, they're welcome to stay and observe.
We'll try, we'll try to, like I said, speed read through these.
Yeah, but I wanted to make sure that they, they knew what we were doing, and I could choose to stay.
Yes, absolutely, but the public is always welcome to stay in our public process here, which is what we're going to talk about for a few minutes. So the reason for open meetings is the procedural due process requires people to be given notice and an opportunity to be heard. The American public and democracy favors openness. So the legislature finds and declares that the state, its agencies and political subdivisions exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. So we here at Harrisville conduct the people's business, and because we do that, it's also the intent of the legislature that the state, its agencies and its political subdivisions take their actions openly, as we did tonight, and conduct their deliberations openly, which we also did tonight. The presiding officer of the public body, which this year its chair will break, shall ensure that the members of the public body are provided with an entry on the requirements of this chapter, so that's meeting that this evening. So there are five parts to the Open and Public Meetings Act, the first part is meetings, the second part is public notice, part three is minutes and records, part four is closed meetings, and part five is enforcement. We're gonna briefly talk about some of those. So what is a meeting? A meeting is the convening of a public body with a quorum present. It includes workshops or an executive session, it includes, includes meetings held in person or by means electronic communications, which we now have because of COVID-19, we've held many meetings electronically.
Absolutely, over the phone.
Yes, you can, you can join by telephone, where the purpose of the meeting is just, is discussing, receiving comments or acting upon a matter where the public body has jurisdiction or advisory power. A meeting is open to the public unless it's a closed meeting allowed under state law, we won't do that when we get to the closed meeting area. Public meetings may only be held at city hall, some exceptions apply. Sometimes legislative bodies ought to go on a field trip, to go spend with the district or go on this stuff. Or go to the site of a location, we can start doing that if it's of interest of, of the planning commission. We can organize site visits for commercial sites and also subdivision walkthrough processes, if that's something that the commission would like to do behind it. What is a public body? A public body is the city council, the planning commission, or any other administrative advisory executive legislative body of the city that is created by statute, rule, ordinance or resolution, has two or more members, spends or is supported by taxes, and has authority to make public decisions. So we automatically post and record and take minutes at city council and planning commission, but Harrisville also requires site plans and subdivisions to come to project management meeting by ordinance. Because of that, we also meet the public notice requirements for our project management meetings that take minutes and post those available for the public. What is not a meeting? A chance meeting, if you run into each other at the grocery store, if you go to the same areas for socialization, that is not considered a meeting, and training is also not. Sometimes we do this in a more informal setting, but this year we're just doing it as part of our, in part of the meetings. The public notice of meetings, in January each year, the city recorder will publish a notice of every meeting would do that at the city council level, but we adopt the planning commission's meeting schedule at that time. We often do it in December before, but sometimes we do it in January. At least 24 hours before we hold the meeting, an agenda is posted with topics with reasonable specificity, and that's to let the public know with certain information what our discussion's going to be about. The date and time of the meeting, the place of the meeting. A topic raised by the public, public that is not on the agenda may only be heard if the presiding officer allows. So no action can actually be taken on an item that is not posted on the agenda. Sure. Agendas must be posted and provided to the local media correspondent, we do send notice of our meetings to the standard examiner, and we also post to the Utah public notice website. People can subscribe, just so you know, to the public notice website, receive emails every time we make a posting for public bodies.
It's nice because it gets it based in advance of the public hearing.
You have, yes, so emergency meetings allowed if, are only allowed in certain circumstances, whether if a natural disaster occurs or some type of a similar situation, if we had a breach in the sewer, storm water issues, flooding, things like that, we can hold emergency meetings. Written meetings of open meeting minutes, excuse me, written minutes of open meetings and a recording shall be kept of all open meetings. Written minutes of a meeting shall include the date, time and place of the meeting, the names of the members present, and also we excuse those that are present. Substance and of all matters proposed, discussed or decided, which may include a summary, comments made by the members of the public body, a record by individual member of each vote taken by the public body. There are certain circumstances of the city council level where a roll call vote is required, that's what that's referencing. Name of each person who is not a member of the public body and upon recognition by the presiding member of the public body, provide a testimony or comments that we had our public hearing tonight, each person gave their name so that we can make part, their comments part of the public record. A brief substance of the testimony or comments provided by the public, and any other information a member requests to be entered into the minutes, so long as it actually happened. We cannot add things to the minutes that didn't work, said or discussed or did not take place in the meeting. A recording of the open meeting shall be a complete and unedited record from commencement through adjournment. Be properly labeled or identified with the date, time and place of meeting, and this city shall make minutes available to the public within 30 days. Oftentimes we adopt those meetings minutes at the next meeting, which is very close to that 30 day mark. We almost always have that posted before the 30 day mark.
And they do things available.
But we have them available usually next day or day after, since we can't click that. Post the approved written minutes of an open meeting to the Utah public notice website and make available to the public at city hall, including any public materials distributed at the meeting. The legislators years ago changed the regulations regarding our packet, now our packet is public record, current public records. So we maintain that on our website, independent of the agenda and minutes, they can see all the resources that were made available for the decisions that we've made. Within three business days after holding an open meeting, we may, we have available.
So that includes the pictures, the diagrams, everything we were sent tonight?
Everything that's sent in the email, your email to you prior to the meeting is the, the, the public record.
And when they send it to us, they post it up next, you can actually go look at it on the city website. Anyone with access to the internet can go look at it on the city website.
So within three business days after holding an unopened meeting, we make the audio and recording available to the public for listening. All our parts of the open meeting may be independently recorded by any person in attendance, if the recording does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. So if a person were to attend our city council or planning commissioner, even our project management meeting, they decided they wanted to record it, they're allowed to do that under the law, as long as they're not interrupting our ability to conduct business.
Usually I'm ready to go to the end, click back, and fill it.
So written minutes shall be the official record of action taken at the meeting. Closed meetings may only be held in certain circumstances, if a quorum is present and two thirds of the city council votes approve closing the meeting. Closed meetings can only be held for limited purposes, a closed executive session is a, a specific meeting held by the city council to discuss things that will allow my here on the next slide. No ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract or appointment can be approved in a closed meeting. Can't make decisions in closed meetings about those things.
Right.
The open meeting minutes must reflect the reason for the closed meeting, the location of the closed meeting, and the role called to enter the closed meeting.
And discuss context and things, but you can't make a decision else you'd have to have another public meeting.
Absolutely.
In order to make those decisions when the public.
And there's multiple ways that the city council can do that, they can put discussion items after closed executive session is held if they want to make a decision and have that discussion, as long as it meets these requirements, they can hold a closed meeting. So it may only be held for the purposes of discussing character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Strategy sessions to discuss land parking, strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonable elevation.
So on, in number, in regards to number one, there, the help of an individual on the council or employee.
An employee, staff, or anybody associated that was conducting the, the city's business, so it could be a personnel issue.
Or hire someone they can do that.
It can be any type of discussion regarding employees or as a member of the council or.
Okay, good, I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange or lease of real property, investigate allegations of criminal misconduct, or discuss deployment of security personnel devices or systems. A public body may not interview a person applying to fill an elected position in a closed meeting. So if we have a vacancy on the city council, they are not allowed to go, enter into a closed executive session to discuss or interview individuals that may have applied to be appointed to that vacant, vacancy. They have to do that in public, and we, we've done that several times in the past. No recording and signed sworn statement if the closed meeting is for those two purposes. So otherwise, so discussing a character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual or deployment of security personnel devices or systems. We're not required to actually even take a record of those discussions. Any of the others were required to take a record, but that record is protected, and it's only released under very rare circumstances. and it's only released under very rare circumstances. Utah Supreme Court broadly interprets the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act to ensure the purposes of openness. Exceptions will be strictly, strictly construed. So this section of Utah law provides that any final action taken in violation of the act is voidable by the court. The, the following statute states that a person who feels the city violated the act may sue to compel compliance, to interpret the act based on a public body's actions, and the court may award reasonable attorney fees and court costs to a successful plaintiff. The act does not prohibit removing a disruptive person from a meeting when orderly conduct is seriously compromised. So someone who are not conducting themselves according to our policy procedures and rules of ethics and behavior, we can ask them to leave. Which does include asking them to leave the building. Any questions? We went through that fairly quickly. We'll move on to the next one if you're ready.
Oh, I thought I got to go home.
I'm sorry. This turned into a pumpkin. This one will, will go through very quickly as well.
And we're on the city council, so we don't have too much of this.
And this, yeah. So the purpose and training of this is to identify protective classes and definitions, the governing laws and policies, the examples and explanations and workplace violence prevention. So that we wanna recognize what's occurring in our workplace and we wanna prevent unlawful conduct and discrimination. We wanna understand complaints and we absolutely wanna avoid costly claims. So these are the protective classes that are protected by law. Race, creed, color, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, veteran status, national, origin, citizenship, disability, age, pregnancy, familial status and genetics. Those are all recognized protective classes under federal and state law. Definition of discrimination means the unjust or prejudi- Sorry.
Prejudicial.
Thank you. Prejudicial treatment of different categories, people or things, especially on the grounds of personal characteristics. harassment means aggressive pressure intimidations and is illegal when directed to a protected class. harassment also is any conduct or behavior toward another person based on a protected class, which is pervasive, unwelcome, insulting, debilitating, threatening, ridiculing, direct, cynical, coercive, coercive and results in a hostile abusive or intimidating, violent environment.
We need to get you a glass of water.
I did this last night. I'll try my best to. Thank you. Pervasive means existing in or spreading through every part of something. Ongoing, constantly hostile and appropriate comments, jokes and you know gestures, touching graphic material and communication. Unwelcome means the opposite of accepting with pleasure that occurs or presents up. So behavior consistently rejected, behavior welcomed at first, but later rejected. Demean means to lower your character status or reputation. Ridicule means to make fun of a mob. Threatening means to cause to feel insecure or anxious. Coercion means to restrain or dominate by force, compel or to, to compel to act or, or choice. So these are the outline federal, state, local laws that protect against those classes. We actually have our own ordinance against non-discrimination ordinance in Harrisville. So I won't read all those, those are all protections.
Oh, you are wonderful.
Thank you. Sexual harassment.
With all your buckies, Rick Peters.
Sexual harassment means sex or gender-based harassment based on hood, pro, quo and/or hostile environment. Hood, pro, quo means you do this and I can do that. Hostile work environment means conduct to a protected class, which unreasonably interferes with an individual's job performance or creates an intending hostile or offensive work atmosphere. Whether or not harassment is linked to economic job consequence. So such behaviors include stereotyping, someone physically touching, targeting a protected class or individual. So who could be a perpetrator? Management, employee, public, anyone. Who can be a victim? Pretty much anyone as well, targeted individual, anyone in the work environment, anyone who tries to help. How do we address harassment? We report to a supervisor. In the council's case, they report to the mayor. In my case, they report to the chair. What to do? We, we stand as an example of the city. I use the example of the city council. I recognize that it's being city employee. I am perceived by the public at our best representative city and everything in my personal life and my professional life. And always anything I do, act, say is a reflection of the city. Dress according to the written dress code in the policy manual. Keep your hands to yourself. Communicate behavior you find unwelcome and report harassment. What not to do? Share too much personal information in the workplace. Focus on comments about the body of another person. Share inappropriate humor, display or share graphic material or inappropriate social media without texting or messages in the workplace. What to do if you have been illegally harassed? Be familiar with our policies. Report to the appropriate authority. Be prepared to give specific information of the time, place or event that happened. Understand confidentiality. Report any type of retaliation and cooperate with efforts to resolve the problem. What is workplace violence? Any act or threat of physical violence, harassment, intimidation or other threatening, threatening disruptive behavior that occurs in the workplace. Examples can be verbal abuse, direct or indirect threats, including non-verbal things, violent or extreme action. Some of the warning signs. Fascination with weapons, alcohol or drug abuse, severe stress, anguish over workplace issues, history of violence, psychological instability, social isolation, declining hygiene or personality changes. A few years ago, we implemented a, a policy for our staff here at Harrisville. We participate in mental health assessment every six months through a provider called Previdence. Also the employee.
Previdence.
Previdence. Previdence, it's actually called Previdence, right? Yes, they, they give us an assessment every six months to, to check in on our mental health. We were actually the first city that made it available to all staff. Other cities were using it for their first responders or police departments. We recognize that the mental health stresses that are involved in this poor work are citywide. And so we offer that to all workplaces. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Stages of violent behavior. Early indicators are outlined there. Escalation, ignoring policy, continuing criminal behavior. Violence obviously includes weapons, assault, arson, even suicide. Prevention is anticipation, recognizing things, implementing security measures to prevent things and intervention and reporting measures. As the actual security measures are to lock doors, use lights and security, implement visitor protocol, call and tell strangers in the workplace. For the most part, we're protected from staff. Our doors here remain closed during the day. We're behind glass and locked doors on the outside. We do have other protocols in place for city employees. If someone's being confrontational at the window, we often hear that. We try to back that person up or even perhaps or who can just be another presence for us when we're dealing with us.
Yeah, a little block of the people out.
We do, we do have to, to interface with the public.
Pretty much calm.
We, we do. We try to avoid that and for the most part, we, we are able to meet that. How to manage disgruntled coworkers and patrons? Just having basic human psychology perception is their reality. Recognizing that even though we may not agree, but what they perceive is actually what they're seeing. Use non-threatening posture, avoid anger, avoid appearing fearful or anxious. And set an example. Oftentimes we can de-escalate someone at the window by just remaining calm ourselves. Respond rather than react. Be truthful and credible, avoid arguments, talk slowly, listen, be attentive and allow the other person to vent. Managing disgruntled coworkers and patrons. We find, we can find solutions by encouraging suggestions and solutions. We'd like to credit ourselves for being solution oriented here in Harrisville. We help correct the wrongs. We follow through as a communication. Be aware of mental illness and reduce, and reduced capacity. Look for win-win resolutions where everyone can save face and retain their dignity. Be fair and reasonable, avoid situations that can be construed as vengeful and face threats by keeping calm or any others and having an escape plan if necessary, call for help. And we do also offer counseling through that Previdence program. So there you have it. As quickly as we could manage through that, not even that, but about twenty minutes. So do you have any questions? That's just our annual training there. There's any questions on our procedures and policies? Just to give you a heads up, we are staff going to be reviewing our procedures and policies, going through our, kind of our policy manual over the next portion of however long it takes us to make sure we're up to date, have the information out there for our employees. That takes us to make sure we're up to date, have the information out there for our employees. Anything else for us? Staff motion to adjourn.
You can't motion anything.
Like we worked on a billion of those positions together. What's their update on how we're getting that?
Yes, uh, thank you. It was the actual mayor posted position. I actually applied myself. I went through the interview process and was hired and sworn in last night. This is what I should have.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I understand the process and the question was pretty intense.
It was very, it was about forty-five minutes. They put me through a, so, yeah. It was, it was well, well done by the mayor and the people that interviewed me was a former mayor, the past masters in public administration and then another, each of those are retired. Individual from Davis County School District. My personal experience, so. Yeah. Any other mayor, council, I will, mayor, council follow-up. Look at me. Slipped back in the last, any, yeah. Commission staff follow-up that we should be aware of?
I don't think so. Okay, so how much more training?
So I believe it's, it's ten hours, isn't it each year? Is it only four? Okay. So okay, count tonight's, because we did our training and you had three hours. So that should meet it. I was thinking it was ten hours.
That's too fast.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna make sure we're all aware of it and that we meet it.
For real estate. That's a record for you to have all of your training by March. I'm very proud of all of you for attending that, so.
Janet?
Yes.
Come at, I'm leaving on the sixteenth, ten days.
And it's week, or next week.
Next week.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you. Have a good rest.
Maybe I could do a Zoom thing.
I don't think it'll be the meeting. Our next meeting won't be until like twelve thirteen.
Okay. Then I'll be going in for surgery on the twentieth.
Oh, dear, okay. Of April. Well, I was gonna tell you to get your good rest because we have a lot of projects almost ready to roll in. We're having quite a big project management meeting tomorrow and we have quite a few projects rolling into you.
I see we have a lot of people sitting on the places, the pipes there, equipment's there and they're done some work.
Yeah, the supply chain has been very difficult for our, the supplies that you see out there, they've already gone through pre-construction meetings for this week. But the golf course is ready to submit their first phase. Very close to that. So that's exciting.
Almost construction fever.
We're, we're excited. We're getting up at that.
At the Copper Woods is where I started moving into our homes. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'm gonna formally adjourn us for this evening. Thank you all for being here.